Kane Hall at the University of Washington. Our members there will vote on which candidates we're endorsing in the District 3 race and in all the other races happening across the city. All of the candidates here that are speaking today are eligible for endorsement in the June meeting, and the only requirement to vote at that meeting is to become a member 10 days in advance. So there's no better time than today to sign up as a member of the 43rd. Moving into our program today, I want to thank the River again for hosting us and say thank you to all of you who dropped a few dollars in our donation bucket to cover the cost of this event and others. Really appreciate that if you haven't on the way out. Would be grateful if you would consider that. So with that being said, I'm really happy to introduce our moderator for this afternoon's forum, Maddie Von Hoff, who is right here. I met Maddie at a community town hall that she organized in the aftermath of the 2016 election, and I'm really excited that this year she has joined the board of the 43rd and is our moderator today. So Maddie, I'll pass it to you.
Thanks Scott. Like Scott said, my name is Maddie Von Hoff. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm going to be your moderator for this afternoon. So before we get started, I'm going to go through a little bit about our forum structure and how our group norms are going to work. So this forum is going to be a mix of pre-prepared questions by the 43rd, as well as those submitted by the audience via note cards. And so we have 43rd District volunteers here today that are going to be collecting your questions throughout our prepared question round, and then we will be asking them during our audience portion. Our candidates up here on stage will have one minute for opening statements, one minute for closing statements, and one minute for each of our pre-prepared questions, which we have three. Questions from the audience will get about 30 seconds to a minute each depending on the question. We do have a timekeeper up here in the front row. Derek, say hi Derek. So he will be putting up the reminders. So green, 30-second warning, it's a countdown. Yellow, I believe is 15 seconds, and then red for time. So feel free to finish your sentence. You know, we're not going to interrupt you mid-sentence, but I'll be here to kind of moderate should you take any additional time after that. As we have asked our candidates here today to adhere to our group norms of staying on topic, not interrupting other candidates, adhering to our time limits, and generally not attacking each other, rebuttling, we also ask that our audience be respectful here today, not booing, yelling, interrupting, any sort of general disruptive behavior, not afraid to call people out. You also might find that some answers here today you strongly agree with, and while we know that we can't stop applause or cheering, please do keep it short. We do have a lot of questions to get through, and so the sooner we can move on, the sooner we can learn more about these great candidates we have up here on stage. And so on that note, I'm going to go ahead and get us started. So we have one minute for opening statements for each candidate to introduce themselves. So I would like to ask each candidate, please introduce yourself, let us know what your gender pronouns are, and tell us why you are the right person to represent the district. If you are the incumbent, what is left to accomplish if you're re-elected? And if you are not the incumbent, what do you think City Council should be doing that it hasn't been? So I'm going to go ahead and get started with Logan. After we're done with this question, we're going to start to the right of him. So go ahead.
Hi everyone, I'm Logan Bowers. Thank you for being here today. Thank you for having me. I'm running because as a fellow resident and renter, I see our community changing quickly. I think we value a welcoming, affordable, and livable city, rich with opportunity for everyone, and now more than ever, we need a leader who delivers on our values. I think the council is moving backwards, not forwards, on many of the issues in the city. Homelessness is getting worse. Housing affordability is getting worse. The climate crisis is already upon us, and we're barely doing anything. We have a choice to make this election. Are we going to try to solve our problems with more of the same? Or are we, we've elected the same political ideologues and opportunists, and we've been getting the same results. I think this time around, we need to try something different. I've worked my whole life as an engineer and small business owner, and uniquely among all of us, I bring a lifetime career of leading teams to deliver on tough problems. And I look forward to discussing how together we can deliver on Seattle's tough problems. Thank you.
And so just as a reminder, so we have three mics up here. If we can just share between maybe each two candidates a microphone. Everyone is pretty loud. That being said, we do have a live stream going on, so it really helps us pick it up for the live stream. And then Logan, I'm not sure, did you share your gender pronouns?
Uh, heh.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Egan Orion, he/him pronouns. Let me just start today by saying that no men should be making laws about women's bodies. This has been front of mind this week, but there's been some good news this week as well. The US House passing the Equality Act, which just goes to show that when Dems are in power, we champion the rights of women, communities of color, and LGBTQ people. I am, I'm asking you, today I'm asking you to join my campaign for innovation and pragmatic solutions for the very real challenges our city faces. I love Seattle. I celebrate it every day. I celebrate it by throwing the biggest single festival day in all of Seattle, Pride Fest. I celebrate the diversity of my neighborhood in the Central District. I celebrate small businesses on Capitol Hill, and I advocate for them. I celebrate our city's progressiveness, but we'll pair it with a plan and a coalition to actually get something done. It's time to get to work, so please join me. Thank you.
My name is Amy Nguyen, and I'm running for Seattle City Council District 3. Growing up, I lived in a unfortunately racially segregated neighborhood, where most of my neighbors were people of color and immigrants. And also growing up, I relied on government benefits, free school lunches, and also helped my family translate our Section 8 housing forms, and also translated for my parents' doctor's appointments to make sure they got the service that they needed. But because of this, this is the reason why I am running for City Council. This is because I know what it feels like to not be heard. I know what it feels like to be underrepresented by your City Council members and also state representatives. And even though I now am able to work for King County as a public defender's office, I still struggle with the cost of living in Seattle, and also with student loans. And as a public defender, I also work with people who are homeless, fighting addiction, and also struggling with mental health issues. And I think it's important that somebody who has worked underground is able to bring the policies that we need to the city and make sure that it works underground. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you to the 43rd District Democrats for hosting this. I was really grateful to have served on their board between 2014 and 2016, and got to do the caucus in 2016, which was a raucous event. And also just thank you to the River for having us. My name is Zachary DeWolfe. I am a citizen of the Chupacan Nation. I am currently a school board director, and I'm honored to serve and work on behalf for teachers, students, and their families. And I'm also, I also work at an organization called All Home, which coordinates homelessness efforts across King County. I'm also really grateful, I've already received endorsements from Teresa Mosqueda and Council Member Lorena Gonzalez, as well as all of the school board members. And I'm running for City Council now because our representation isn't working for all of us. We need leadership that drives towards solutions. In native culture, we often talk about the seven generations principle, which says that what we do now must create positive and sustainable solutions for today and seven generations into the future. And in order to do that, we must bring people together to solve some of our city's greatest challenges. In our district, I do not think we have that kind of leadership, and you deserve more. Thank you very much.
And so, yeah, one, feel free to applaud here, that's totally fine. Maybe I was a little too firm on the applause thing. And then just a reminder for Candace to share gender pronouns as well.
Good afternoon, I'm Pat Marakami, she/her. I moved to Seattle back in 1975, so I'm a long-term resident. I own a small IT company, and I work with businesses across any industry just about you can imagine, from institutions to one-person shops, and we do work for individuals as well. So I get a really unique perspective from people about Seattle's issues. I'm running to bring practical, progressive solutions to the problems Seattle is facing. I'm running because I'm aware that people in this district have been overlooked and taken it for granted. I'm running because I care about everyone in Seattle, and people deserve a council that will solve Seattle's problems. One of them is housing affordability. Our City Council has failed to have policies that make housing more affordable. The more rental units we have, the higher the rents go. So having lived here for decades, I know what the people of the district want, and I will deliver those solutions. Thank you.
Shamis Sawant, Council Member for District 3, she/her. What's at stake this year is who gets to run Seattle, big business or working people? We cannot let Amazon and the Chamber of Commerce buy this election to take City Hall back to business as usual, especially at a time when we have to show leadership against Trump's anti-woman, anti-worker, anti-immigrant agenda. Join me in building a movement for rent control to tax big business to fund a massive expansion of social housing because the for-profit market has failed us. Join me in making Seattle an anti-Trump city by making Seattle ice-free. We have won historic victories, the $15 minimum wage, Indigenous People's Day, landmark renters' rights like the move-in fee cap and payment plan, prohibiting landlords from raising rents in rental homes with code violations, and millions for affordable housing. We also won a law that mandates voter registration cards be included in tenant information packets. We have shown through the five years in City Hall that working-class politics, bringing the movement into City Hall, works and is effective in winning victories. When we fight, we can win.
So thank you, everyone, for introducing yourselves and joining us here today. Our first question is on housing affordability, and we're going to start with Egan, then going to his right. I know we're shaking it up a little bit. That way, that way you don't have to start every single one. So housing affordability affects almost everyone here in District 3, from those struggling to afford their rent, those who are being displaced from their communities, and those who are living on the street. What are your proposals for solving our housing affordability crisis? And we'll get one minute. Derek, thank you.
Oh yeah, there's no doubt there's a housing affordability issue in the city, and it's affecting not only those of us that live in the various communities around the city, but of course also our unsheltered neighbors. I think that, well, first of all, I just want to say on rent control, I know that Council Member Sawant's a big advocate for that. I am not. If you look at the studies about rent control, it shows that it's actually a disaster for the availability of homes. So I think that we definitely need rent stabilization and to give tenants the ability to stay in their homes to be able to bridge an emergency. I think there's some creative solutions that we can implement to get more affordable housing online as quickly as possible. There are thousands of units of empty apartments and hotels throughout the city. Let's incentivize those property owners to bring those back up to code so that the people who need affordable housing today have them available to them.
Thank you. Through my work as a public defender, I've spoken to hundreds of clients who are homeless. And although there are plenty of great nonprofits throughout the city of Seattle that provide them services and housing, the problem is that there's no way for the nonprofits to coordinate. So Seattle needs to provide a system where the nonprofits can coordinate to make sure that people who are homeless are taking a step forward. In addition to that, not only housing is necessary, but also case management within the housing, so that we not only put people in homes, but keep them in there. And you know they're going to need help doing that. For people who are working, we are one paycheck away from that situation. So we need to make sure that we provide programs that if real life occurs, like a medical situation occurs, or a family situation occurs, we are providing rent assistance so they can maintain their homes. And for people who own their homes, we need to make sure that if we're discussing any type of property tax raises, we need to make sure why we're doing it, and need to make sure that it's for the right reasons, and we're not actually pushing people out of their homes if we are going to pass such a thing. Thank you.
Well, I want to nerd out for a little second here because there's some really important things that we need to contextualize. In the 1970s, we were building 600,000 units of affordable housing per year, and in the 1980s, they reduced that number to 10,000 units of affordable housing per year. So we have not kept up with population growth. The second thing is since the 1960s, rents have increased by about 60%, and income has only increased by about 5%. And here's one last thing. In 20, between 2010 and 2016, we lost 60% of the affordable housing stock in this country. So we have to recognize the fact that this is a huge issue that we actually need to coordinate and work with our federal partners on. Two ideas that I'm really interested in, and the first one is a shallow rent subsidy. This year at my organization, we created a proposal with building changes to provide a shallow rent subsidy for folks to be able to maintain their rents. And the second idea I have is making sure to look at and strengthen the partnership with Seattle Public Schools to create affordable housing around our 105 public schools to make sure that families, students, and teachers can live right where they work. Thank you.
Well, these are the things I've been harping on for years. One, we need to protect legacy tenants, whether they're commercial or residential. They should be able to return to the new development at the rent they were at before with a long-term contract. We can charge vacancy taxes on empty units, and that would reduce rents right there because people would rather get a lower rent than pay a tax for nothing. And we need to charge our foreign investors who are literally buying Seattle up from underneath us a foreign investment tax like they do in Vancouver, B.C. A 15% tax would have given us on a recent sale of a property in downtown Seattle that went for $740 million, that would have given us $111 million to build 370 affordable units. There's no excuse that we're not doing that. And finally, we have to regulate the agencies that are supposed to be helping low-income people. I'm aware of S.H.A. and Capitol Hill Housing evicting people for owing as little as $100. And that has to stop.
If the last 10 years have shown anything in Seattle, they have shown that the for-profit market has completely failed us. Seattle has been the construction crane capital for four years running, and yet housing has become less affordable, not more, and you have a 10% vacancy rate in the city. So in other words, we need a real, serious, bold policy alternative to the for-profit market. And I think two really important policies that we have to fight for are rent control free of corporate loopholes. Another city that has shown that it acts as a veritable lifeline for a lot of tenants, and we have to fight for it free of corporate loopholes. We also need a massive expansion of social housing, which is publicly owned affordable housing, and that needs to be funded by progressive taxes like the Amazon tax, development impact fees, vacancy taxes, and so on, because this is a really regressive town in terms of taxes. We also have to remember that policies like rent subsidies ultimately will not solve the problem, because that means using public resources to benefit corporate landlords, because that's whose pockets that money will go into, and the rents will never go down.
So as the, as the one here who's on the panel who's a renter, this is a very real problem and very tangible problem for me. And here's how I look at it from an engineering perspective. Over the last decade, we added 100,000 jobs to downtown Seattle alone. That was 50% growth, an entire town's worth of new workers in our downtown. We only added 45,000 housing units citywide. So 45,000 units for 100,000 workers. As long as that structural gap exists, somebody's getting squeezed out. Every other solution is window dressing unless we close that gap and have enough houses for the number of workers in the city. So this is the approach that I take, which is we have to adjust the city's policy so that it is legal to build enough housing to match the number of office jobs that we keep adding. And this is entirely within the city's control through zoning code and land use regulations. And if you do the math, it ends up just a single triplex per block. One triplex per block citywide completely closes our housing gap.
Thank you, everyone. So our next question is in regards to the recent shootings here on Capitol Hill and in the Central District. We're going to be starting with you, Amy. What should be done in regards to these recent shootings here in Capitol Hill and in the Central District? What should be done to balance neighborhood safety with the justified fears that communities have of overpolicing?
As I presented in my introduction, unfortunately, I grew up in racially segregated neighborhood where it was a lot of people of color and also immigrants. And also gangs, Bloods, Crips, that was an everyday thing for me. And walking home was out of the question because it was not safe. And that's how, that's what I know kids are experiencing now. So we need to make sure that we keep our streets safe, but also provide after-school programs to youth to make sure that they don't fall in the hands of people who are asking them to join gangs. Because as much as we'd like to think that that issue is still in the past, as we've seen recently and very unfortunately, it's very much still a reality for us. And so we need to make sure that students and youth have an option. In addition to that, I find that anyone who has been in the gang life before can come back to the community and not only speak with young persons who are facing that community, but also with the police department about what worked for them, why they are no longer a gang member. I think that's very important for us to do and make sure that we're improving the community. Thank you.
Well, I think what's really important too is just to elevate the fact that particularly for Black and Brown and LGBTQ communities, we have a troubled history with police and enforcement. And I remember stories from the 70s, I met with a friend, he was telling me about the times that they would just get arrested for jaywalking just to intimidate folks. So we really have to come to terms with that. The second thing I think is really important, we just have to work a lot more upstream. And I think that is a hard thing to talk about, but it's really important to make sure we're investing in community-based violence prevention programs, making sure that we have good victim reentry programs so that folks aren't getting revictimized. And so it's also very important not only to talk about some of the upstream things like making sure our neighborhoods look and feel safe by lighting and all those things, but also listening to what our young people are saying. And young people at Seattle Public Schools through the NAACP Youth Coalition say the one thing they really need is not more cops, it's more counselors and mentors in our schools. So really investing in what young people say, that's what I want to start with.
Well, in, with regard to policing in general, we need officers that reflect the faces and gender identity of the people that they're policing, and we don't have that right now. So we need to recruit from within our own communities and encourage people to be examples for fellow community members. I'd like to see more police be mentors and examples rather than more police serving as more of a punitive service or arresting people more. In an ideal world, there would be no arrests. But I think that the problem existing today in the central area with the gang violence is our Black youth are under or completely unemployed. We need job opportunities for them. We need proper economic development, and we need to stop forcing our communities of color out of the central area and other neighborhoods in the city, which is going on right now. The MHA legislation disproportionately impacted low-income people and people of color. So I would start with programs in the schools and work our way up from there, but we need youth employment right now.
Condolences to the family of Royal Lexing, the young Black man who was unfortunately tragically gunned down in violence last week. My husband and I hear the gunshots all the time because we live in the city of Leshai neighborhood also. And one of the recent shootings took place just two blocks from our house. Among other things, we need common sense gun control measures like banning semi-automatic weapons to prevent the kind of incidents that happened on 28th and Jackson. I'm talking to community members who are recommending changes in public space usage and traffic coming measures, but we also know none of these are going to work by themselves if the overarching problems in our society remain unaddressed. Nationwide studies have shown that reducing inequality has the biggest impact by far in reducing violence and crime. That means bold policies for genuinely providing affordable housing for all the families with children, for all families. And we also need to address the alienation faced by young people by making sure that we tax big business to fully fund public schools with all programs, including counselors, libraries, and internet access.
So I think what we're seeing is years of disinvestment in public safety and years of disinvestment in programs for youth that are preventative, that give kids in our city options other than falling into the wrong crowds on the streets. We need to build a police force that is perceived as an ally of the community and is not feared so that they can work together with the members of the community to address and root out crime and violence in our communities. I think it's also important that we acknowledge that the makeup of the folks in this room is not the demographic makeup of the folks who would be subject to that policing. So we need to make sure that everyone's voices are at the table when we discuss exactly how we implement that. I also think it's important to note that speed bumps, I don't think are a solution for gun violence. Thank you.
So not all communities have the same issues and not all of them, not all communities have the same policing needs. I live down by 23rd and Union where there's been several shootings lately. I think that if you go to a lot of communities in Seattle, they can tell you the same thing. I was doorbelling today in Leshai and got that same feedback. There's no doubt that the SPD is understaffed. In Boston, they have twice as many cops per capita than we do here in Seattle. And not all policing is good, especially for communities of color and for LGBTQ people. That is a fact. We need to hire cops that come from the communities that they serve so that they have cultural competency and that they build relationships in those communities. It's good to see that the SPDs could be rolling out community policing efforts. You know, before, before I get cut off here, I wanted to highlight something. There's a council bill coming up on Monday, 119288, it's a hate crimes bill. It's being rushed to the council, and it's meant to protect particularly trans and gender diverse people, but it actually may do the opposite. So go and testify, please, find out.
Thank you, everyone. So this next question is in regards to transportation. We'll start with you, Zachary. Many transportation advocates are frustrated by the recent delays and cancellations of planned transit and bike safety improvements. What should the City Council be doing to make it safer and greener for everyone to move around the city?
Great question, thank you. You know, the Seattle Climate Action Plan came out a year ago, and in it, it described building more bike infrastructure, making sure that our transportation was equitable. I don't think it was bold enough, and I think we have to do a lot more. And I will say that there are actually neighbors that I've talked to on the doors, in emails, and folks are actually, I don't think they're really sure about the positive effects and impacts of bike lanes and bike infrastructure in our city. My husband rides a bike, and every time he does that, I get very scared for him, and I text him when he leaves, and I tell him to text me when he gets there. And it's because our bike infrastructure is not safe and it is not welcoming. What is really exciting is that when you invest $1 in transportation, you get $4 in economic impact. And this is a really smart strategy for bringing economic impacts and excitement and invigoration into our communities. So I think part of it is we really have to double down on the investments in our transportation infrastructure, and one of those really is bikes. I think the other thing too is that transportation has a really great way of bringing people out of poverty. It is one of the great equalizers. If we invest in transportation, we actually do a lot more to address income inequality in our city too.
Well, one, we were promised connector buses to light rail when it went in in South Seattle, and that still hasn't happened. They were supposed to be the ribs to the spine. The spine is there and they cut ribs, is what they did. So I, we really need to work with King County Metro and get proper bus routes. I know Eastlake has a backlog of people trying to commute back and forth to downtown. I'd like to see the creation of bike boulevards where bikes have the right of way and people do feel protected. We don't have enough data. I believe about 20% of the cars in downtown Seattle now are either Lime or Uber on their way to pick somebody up with no passenger inside. And so we have to look at the impacts of for-profit programs like that. And finally, I'd like the city to do something with either low or no interest program to help people buy electric bikes. I think a lot of people would bicycle if they had that opportunity.
I think a very recent occurring in City Hall showed what we're going to need to achieve our transportation priorities. Activists around the city and the region have fought so hard, have been fighting so hard to build the Bicycle Master Plan, attain Vision Zero goals and so on. And we know that the Bicycle Master Plan serves working class and middle class people for transportation as opposed to some of the common myths that are propagated about it. And the Move Seattle levy shows how willing overtaxed middle class and working class people are to use their own limited income to push for this. But the debacle of the 35th Avenue bike lane shows that bicycle advocates will have to build a movement just like any other, for any other goal, because Mayor Durkin has chosen to ignore us all. So we need to, we need to do that. We need to also prioritize pedestrians at signalized intersections. We need to decriminalize transit rider non-famant. And last but not least, we need progressive revenues to be raised for a full expansion of public transit and make all public transit free.
So I'm really glad we got this question. Climate change is not getting enough of the discussion here. So we have, cycling infrastructure is especially important for two reasons. Number one is the city's growing, but we have the same roads we've always had for the last 100 years. And so no matter how you slice it, we have to move more people in the same road space more efficiently if we want to keep moving. And so that means more people need to be able to choose a bicycle, or more people need to be able to choose mass transit. So it's absolutely critical. I spent all day yesterday on Bike Everywhere Day, meeting cyclists coming down high. And it's clear we don't have enough safe infrastructure. The standard for me is, is a bike lane safe enough that you'd be willing to ride in it with your child? And almost universally, the answer to everyone I met yesterday was, no way. And if you do, if you look at it now, the city and the council has built probably zero miles of bike lane that meets that standard of safety, but we have to get there, and we need to have that safe biking infrastructure for all ages, all skill levels, so that need to have that safe biking infrastructure for all ages, all skill levels, so that folks can choose a bicycle rather than choose a vehicle.
I think on the green transportation issue, we have to look at electrifying all of our public transit. That has to be a priority. As far as bike lanes are concerned, I think that as we see micro mobility solutions like e-scooters and the solo wheel like my friend over here rides, I think we see them becoming more popular. The bike lanes are not going to be just for bikes. There's all sorts of safety concerns for people riding all sorts of different types of micro mobility solutions. So yes, let's make the bike lanes safe. I do believe, however, that we have to get the basics right. Bikers do not only go in these bike lanes, they are going on all of our roads. And our major arterials on Capitol Hill in particular are falling apart. So before we invest in bike lanes, let's commit to filling all the potholes. We have to do the basics before we can go on to create these other things, which are going to be fantastic and create a safer transportation system and be more equitable. We have to get the basics right first.
When we're talking about mass transportation and improvement, we also need to make sure that we're inclusive of everyone. And that includes low-income communities, which oftentimes, when they're trying to take public transportation, requires a lot of transferring in order to get their jobs, or the bus shelters. There's none, and that's the problem. We know that it rains a lot here, but at the same time, in the poorer neighborhoods, we have polls that say where the bus is and no shelter. That's completely unfair. And that's something that I want to address if elected as city council is to make sure that when we move forward with mass transportation, it's equitable. And regarding the bike lanes, yes, the city council needs to not, to make sure to listen to where the bypass should be and where it should be safely. Because when you force bicyclists to transition from bike lanes to traffic to bike lanes, that's dangerous for the bicyclists, that's dangerous for pedestrians, and that's dangerous for drivers, too. And so we need to make sure that when we're saying, hey, we're going to build this, we're going to build it. Thank you.
You can keep that. So that is the last of our prepared questions, and we thought that those were some of the most pressing issues that we had seen, but we know that our audience here has a lot of questions they would like to ask you as well. Starting with taxes, so we are going to start with Pat, I believe, was next. So this is an audience question, and we are going to give this one minute. So Derek, if you want to set that for a minute. Who should pay taxes for Seattle's infrastructure services?
Well, that's easy. That should be the developers. We have failed to charge impact fees. And the echo chamber at City Hall says, well, if we do that, then the developers won't build. Well, they charged them in Bellevue, and there's lots of building going on there. We've really dropped the ball in this city. You and I are paying higher rents, higher property taxes because the city council failed to charge impact fees. So that's my short answer.
Seattle has the most regressive tax system in the entire nation, meaning if you are low-income, working class, or middle-class, you pay a big share of your income as taxes. If you're wealthy, you pay very little, like 2%. And if you're a corporation like Amazon, Boeing, or Microsoft in this state, you actually get money back. And thanks to Trump's tax cuts, Amazon as a corporation, you know, for its nationwide tax liability, actually got $129 million back rather than paying into the community. The answer is very, very clear. The taxes should be paid by big corporations and by wealthy households. We need various forms of progressive taxes of that kind. We need to fight for the Amazon tax. We need developer impact fees. We need vacancy taxes and a tax on wealthy households as well. But look, for all of these ideas, you know, you don't need to invent more ideas. We have the ideas out there. The main component is the political will to fight for this and win this. Last year's repeal of the Amazon tax that our movement fought so hard for shows that you have to build a strong movement that can overcome corporate domination.
So we do need progressive tax sources to fund infrastructure in our city. We have the most aggressive tax system in the country, in Washington State. One of the challenges we face is that the city doesn't have legal authority to actually use any progressive tax sources, and that's something that we need to lobby for in Olympia to get that changed so that we have options here. And so far, Olympia has been unwilling to grant the City of Seattle progressive tax sources because they don't trust us to use that money responsibly. And I think that's with good reason under the current council. So I think first step to getting to actual progressive revenues is showing that the city can responsibly spend the money it has on the programs that we already have on homelessness and on transportation. If we can't even fix basic transportation issues, it's going to be a real hard lift to try to get folks to support taxes even higher. I do ultimately think it will take more money, but the first thing we have to do is get our house in order. That's a basic management and oversight problem, and it's something that's lacking on the current council.
So we don't, as residents in Seattle, we don't need to be taxed more. We need to be taxed differently. As many of the candidates have talked about, we have one of the most regressive tax systems in the entire country, and we have great needs for tax revenue. But out there doorbelling and talking to voters, people don't want their, people don't want their, no worries, no, we're all good. Okay, okay, no worries, no worries, take care of you. What we don't need is an increase in sales tax. What we don't need is an increase in property tax. People are hurting, people are getting displaced by those things. So I do think that impact fees are necessary. I think that Pat is right on that piece. I think that we should definitely explore other revenues. The other revenue source that we can get money from is on BNO. But our small businesses are struggling, so those BNO taxes should not be on small businesses, it should only be on larger businesses. And that will be another source of income to pay for our infrastructure, which we so desperately need. Fix the potholes.
And also canvassing around the neighborhoods. There are neighbors in our district who, on paper, may look rich because their property value has gone up. But in reality, they are living on a fixed income. So I agree, we should not rely on property taxes in order to fund the programs that we need for the community. What I'm pushing for and will push for is going to be capital gains tax. So that, yes, if on paper it says your home value is this, but you're on a fixed income, we shouldn't force people who have lived here for decades to move. What we should consider is if people are making money, then we're going to tax that money. That's called capital gains tax, and that's what I would push for if elected for city council.
Thanks, Amy. Well, as has been said, we are in the most regressive tax system here in the country. I think what's really important is to continue fighting and working with our legislators in Washington to make sure we have the authority to do an income tax and the capital gains tax, which I think was really frustrating this year as somebody who went down to Olympia to lobby for more funding for our public schools, that they didn't bring that through, but I think we made some good progress. I think what's also really important to note is that the city created the Progressive Revenue Task Force, and all the time we've spent on talking about any other tax that we've tried and failed is that we haven't actually addressed or focused on exploring the ideas that came from that Progressive Revenue Task Force. So a local estate tax, expanding on the REIT. This year, the REIT was, has a phased, graduated approach, we could actually expand on that. Second homes tax, vacant properties. The other thing, too, is particularly as we think of regional issues, transportation, and homelessness, it's really critical, we're actually working with our county partners, maybe looking at just in a very small way, .025 increase to the payroll tax. And the last thing I would say is something I'm really interested in looking at is an income-based fees and fines to really make those fees and fines more equitable for folks.
Thank you, everyone. And I just want to say as well, thank you all for respecting the time. Thank you, Derek, for keeping time. It makes my job really easy. So this next question is 30 seconds, and we're going to start with Shama at the end. What are your three top concrete policy proposals to make Seattle more affordable? So 30 seconds, Derek.
Well, first of all, we have to address the failures of the for-profit market, and that's why we need public alternatives. And so the answer is clear, you don't need more ideas, more studies, you don't need more economists. As an economist, I can tell you rent control without corporate loopholes works. A massive expansion of social housing that is publicly owned housing by progressive taxation, by the Amazon tax, works. And it also works to have humane services for people facing homelessness because rising rents and lack of funding for homeless services is what's causing the problems. And stop the sweeps, use the $10 million spent on the sweeps for housing.
So as I mentioned earlier, the number one thing we have to do is we have to close the shortage of housing. As long as we have fewer homes than we have people working here, everything else is window dressing. So that's number one for me, and that's through a policy of restoring the neighborhoods actually to their original zoning, which is to legalize small multifamilies like duplexes and triplexes. District 3 has already had them from pre-1958 when they were once legal. If we go back to that, one triplex per block or by thereabouts, completely closes our housing shortage. On top of that, better transit is critical. That allows people to move further away without suffering a longer commute. And lastly, subsidize for low-income folks.
And just heads up, it's 30 seconds, so it's pretty fast.
Yeah, so as far as housing is concerned throughout our neighborhoods in Seattle, we do need to fill that missing middle with light density, with duplexes and triplexes, ADUs, DADUs. I think that as far as, my policy I was talking about earlier about incentivizing the, this is very fast time, incentivizing opening up those empty apartments and hotel rooms. And then thirdly, I want to bond for over 1,000 new supportive housing units. That's where it's most critically needed for our chronically homeless. We want to bond that with the county, and we can pay it back through general funds over time because we're already paying for that now.
30 seconds, remember.
Going back to the capital gains tax, for example, if you are going to sell stocks over $250,000, that's, we should use the capital gains tax in order to build more, not only affordable income, housing, but also low income. Because a lot of times, affordable income means an income of $70,000 to $80,000 a year. And that makes a lot of people who are in low-income housing unable to stay in the city. In addition to that, as the city has been able to move forward with ADUs and also DADUs, highly suggested in order to create more affordable housing and also making tax assumptions for low-income homeowners to make it easier for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. The first thing we need to do is, as part of MHA, they had a requirement that you could either pay or you could perform. We need to get rid of the payment option because every developer should be required to build affordable housing. The second thing is we need to make sure that particularly as we look at our schools as hubs, community hubs, we expand, we create zoning around them to help build missing-middle housing, duplexes and triplexes, and make sure our teachers and students can live near their schools. And the last thing is invest in transportation. Transportation will move people out of poverty.
One, charge foreign investors the foreign tax because they're buying most of the parcels downtown. Two, and the inadequate in Lufy's, demand inclusionary onsite affordable units for the life of the building across affordability gamuts. Now, that means low, low to moderate income. And three, protect legacy tenants where they can stay at the rent that they're at now.
Thank you, everyone. So this question is around, this next question from our audience is around homelessness, and we're back to a minute, so keep that in mind. So Derek, if you want to set it for a minute. Considering the recent court ruling that we can't remove homeless people from the streets without giving an alternative, what do you propose for this immediate need? And we're going to start with Logan up here again.
Yeah, so for those of you who aren't familiar, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals said that you cannot force someone to leave a public space if you do not have somewhere credible for them to go. Over the decade, over the last decade, the city and the county have been chronically underinvesting in our homeless services. We have 11,200 unsheltered neighbors in King County, we have service capacity for 6,000. That's why we see tents on the streets because there's literally nowhere else for them to go. One of the big problems is, under our current spending, we're not buying the right types of services to be effectively helping folks. So I'll give you a quick example of that. We fund overnight emergency shelters that aren't full. And the reason they're not full is because you have to be in by nine, out by six, you can't bring a pet, you can't bring a spouse. That is worse in every way than living on the street in a tent. We need to be funding services that do actually solve problems that homeless folks are currently experiencing so that it's a better choice for them. And that's an example of like a 24-by-7 shelter where they can store their stuff, they can stay with a spouse, and so on. So we got to shift the spending.
All right, so if we divide up the homelessness crisis into a few different parts, we can maybe understand it a little bit better. There is a shelter crisis, there is a mental health and addiction crisis, and then there is a supportive housing and affordable housing crisis. So let's look at those three things. On the shelter side, Logan's totally right. We need to have 24/7 low-barrier shelters, and they need to be in every neighborhood around this city. Because folks that are living on the streets will often refuse to go to shelter because they can't bring with them their partner or their pets or their possessions. And so we need to make sure we have 24/7 low-barrier shelter. The next piece about mental health and addiction care, we don't do enough. And if we don't focus on that area, we're going to have people coming into the system, falling out, and coming back in again. That is critical if we're going to solve our homelessness crisis, and a lot of people don't necessarily focus on that. It's not about shaming the people that are experiencing addiction out there, it's about helping them get out of homelessness. All right, thank you.
Going towards, in answering to the question specifically, what is the immediate need? And it is more shelters, not just shelters for people who might be single, hetero, cisgender, but also families. A lot of families might not be counted in there because they're couch surfing, staying temporarily with friends. And so when we go around counting who's homeless and who's not homeless, unfortunately, a lot of families do not get counted. Also, in my line of work, it's very unfortunate, but a lot of women will try to avoid being homeless, and so they'll live in dangerous situations. And so we need to make sure that when we're counting who's homeless, who's not, and who needs places like Mary's Place, we need to be realistic about it and know that the numbers is not reflective of the reality. Reality is much harsher. So we need to make sure that we have shelters. But not only that, but we can't just have that as the only plan. We need to make sure that we have a five-year plan that right now pays for shelters, but slowly integrate it into permanent housing, and then from permanent housing to make sure that we provide job trainings for the tenants to maintain their homes. Thank you.
Thank you for this question. This is actually one of the key reasons I'm running, actually. In the 2016-2017 school year, 4,280 students were experiencing homelessness in the Seattle Public Schools. This is a crisis. I think what's really important is, I work at the organization that Logan was referencing with that number, 11,199 people have experienced homelessness this year outside our observational account. That number has actually gone down in the last year by 8%. We're not celebrating that, we're not proud of that, but it is to say, we know it works, regional approach, targeted investments, and a by-names list. We've reduced veterans homelessness. So what we know and what we're going to keep doing, particularly next month, we're launching the End Youth Homelessness Now campaign to use those same tactics. 48% of adults experiencing homelessness experienced homelessness as a young person. If we can target investments and support young people and their experience of homelessness, we prevent a future experience of homelessness and reduce that inflow. The second thing we need to do is we need to center people in the experience of homelessness, and what they say they need is one-time financial assistance. I'm really proud to manage the program called Diversion here at King County. We have a $1.25 million diversion fund that helps people quickly resolve their experience of homelessness for a lot cheaper than rapid rehousing, emergency shelters, or transitional housing. I'm very passionate about this issue.
We can build single-room occupancy buildings on surplus city land by contracting directly with a builder and then have a nonprofit manage it after it's built. That could be done rapidly with less overhead than if we wait and have nonprofits build them. We can match people with other people that have spare bedrooms to rent out and give the apartment, the person that has the apartment or the home, a break on their utilities for doing that. Unfortunately, we can't give them a break for property taxes. We can utilize empty buildings. There are lots of empty buildings in the city that we could remodel inside and make it into a decent place for people to live so they're not living in sheds. And finally, we should have a voucher system and use, or have put people into the empty apartments that are all over the city, and not taking vouchers should not be an option.
The best and really only antidote to homelessness is to actually have a public alternative to for-profit markets. So we need rent control, we need to build hundreds of thousands of units of social housing. But in the here and now, in addition to fighting for the Amazon tax and rent control, we also need to make sure that we expand what is working for homeless people as a reprieve. And one of those solutions is tiny houses. I didn't invent the solution, but it works, and we should be really strongly supporting it. There's a tiny house village on 18th and Yescler, go look at it. They are very low-cost homes. They're wooden structures. They're safe from the weather. They provide security for women. You can live in them with pets. There are many organizations that are doing it. They provide really good transitions to permanent housing because it gives you stability and security to get your life together. But we have to make sure this doesn't become a for-profit venture. No so-called pallets that are built by for-profit corporations that are much flimsier than the wooden structures that are built by volunteers. So let's make sure we fight for those kinds of solutions in addition to the permanent solutions like rent control and social housing.
So before I ask this next question, anyone who's standing in the back, please do come up. We have plenty of seats up in the front. I know it's kind of weird to come up when folks are talking, but please come and sit down. We have five seats up here. We have six or seven seats there. If you want to stand, that's totally great as well. I'd also like to ask, if your cellphone is on, if everyone could kind of take out their cellphone now and turn it off. They're, you know, they're trying to keep their concentration. It can, you know, be a little distracting. So if everyone could turn it off, that would be amazing. So we are going to start this next audience question with Egan. This is 30 seconds. So Derek, if you want to set a 30-second timer. It's intense, I know. I know, right. New chance for a 30-second question. So the question is, who has...
Like two black kids in school and like 3,000, you know, white kids. And it came upon me to like produce this. And Norm Rice came out to present at that. And I thought that Norm Rice was an incredible person. I really liked Jenny Durkan, too.
This, rain has not completed, or time has not completed, but I did look forward very much to the education levy that passed last year. I think it's a great decision to have higher...
Well, I think, I'm going to answer this a little bit different. So I think personally, it's the legend like Norm Rice. I'm actually really grateful for Mayor Tim Burgess in his very short time because he signed the partnership agreement between Seattle Public Schools and the City of Seattle. And I actually also am very grateful for Mayor Durkan for making sure that the Families Education Preschool and Promise Levy passed as well.
Well, my favorite is Norm Rice because he started the Department of Neighborhoods, which has since been diminished greatly. But it gave you a voice. If you live in a high-density urban part of Seattle with a lot of apartments, you got to decide what happened in your neighborhood. And if you had kids and you live near the public schools and their parks or whatever, you got to decide what happened in your neighborhood. The worst mayor, Nichols, he's the one that started developers taking over our city.
I'm unable to answer this question with any name because honestly, there's just been, with some variations, obviously, you can't paint everyone with the same brush. But with some variations, it's mainly been a string of mayors who don't really, and it's not just mayors, let's not single them out, generally elected officials and candidates who don't respond to the needs of ordinary people and who are generally tied to big business. So rather than focus on individuals, let's build a movement, grassroots movement, ordinary people. Because history shows that millions of people coming together, that's what wins victories, not politicians at the top.
I'm actually going to answer Wes Ulman. He, which I heard in the crowd, it's a little before my time, but when I went back and looked over the mayors and the history of the city, he presided over some really tense times of especially racial strife and issues with the ATF. There's a particular one with ATF, threatened, almost violently, doing a sting operation on the Black Panthers at the time, I believe. So I look back on that and I see a level of, a time where things could have gone really, really wrong in the city. And it went really wrong in other cities like Philadelphia where similar operation resulted in...
Time. Next question is on public education, and I'm going to give this a minute. I believe we're starting with Amy. Could you tell us your thoughts on public education in Seattle? And do you support giving families and education money to charter schools? So it's, can you tell us your thoughts on public education in Seattle? And do you support giving, I think it's families and education money to charter schools?
So when I was growing up, unfortunately, in high school, a lot of my friends who unfortunately went to juvenile hall, and that's a reason, part of the reason why I'm a public defender today, there was a school just down our street who had so many more supplies than us, had AC. And we were wondering, why is it that they have all so much more resources than us? And it's shocking, but it's still a reality 20, 25 years later now. And that shouldn't be a reality. We should make sure that each school has an equitable amount of resources. We need to make sure that schools have nurses. We need to make sure that schools have social services. Because that's a point where a lot of parents, and also a lot of families who are low-income, are finally able to get the resources that they need. If they can't reach, for example, to go downtown, or if they can't reach to go to Olympia, that is a resource where they can have consistently information about what programs are out there for them. And the answer is no. I don't think that the levy should go to charter schools.
Thank you. This is a great question. And I just want to be clear. To answer the last question first, absolutely do not agree that that money should not go to any charter schools. I was really grateful to run against a charter school candidate when I ran, and was really grateful for the success that that proved for me because I know that our city is really, really committed to public education. What I think is really important to note is that our public schools are not fully funded here in Washington State. Let me give you one small example. Special education services cost Seattle Public Schools $140 million. You know how much the state pays us? $80 million. So every year, we are making sure to follow through on our commitment to providing special education services in our schools. And the state does not actually fulfill its duty and its constitutional duty to make sure they're amply funded. What I would say is this, we need to focus on what students are saying. And a lot of students are saying that exact same thing. They see the inequalities in our schools. One thing, again, I would like to just elevate is the fact that a lot of our schools are completely surrounded by single-family homes. It's really important we look at the fact that some of those are wealthy enclaves. And in order to address that, we need to make sure more people can live with economic diversity around our schools, teachers, young folks, seniors, people that are providing childcare. Public schools are absolutely critical to our city.
First, on charter schools, I am adamantly opposed to the privatization of any public asset, including publicly collected taxes. And there's a charter school in South Seattle that just got $15 million grant from the Gates Foundation. If you took that money and gave $1 million to each of 15 different Seattle Public Schools, we would all be better off. Also, charter schools have not performed well on tests. I mean, hot mess all around. We put too much pressure on our schools here. We need, as a city, to support the schools. It's our job as residents of Seattle and leaders to get our kids to school, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. It's Seattle Public Schools' job to teach them. So we need to have social workers in every school that Seattle pays for. We need after-school programs to build community in that area that Seattle pays for, and support our schools. They would all perform better if we did that.
As an educator myself and a member of the Public College Teachers Union, I'm absolutely opposed to charter schools or any form of privatization of our public education. Here in Washington State, the Gates Foundation, billionaires like Jeff Bezos poured in millions to finally ram through their charter school agenda, which squeaked by by 50.69% against 49.31% after being roundly rejected for three times at the ballot. Clearly showed that this is not the mandate of the majority of the people. And yet, money can sway political outcomes, and that is why we need to have public action by ordinary people. And in a state that has corporations like Amazon and Boeing and Microsoft, there is no excuse. It is a criminal underfunding of public education. And rather than fully funding public education, we have a state legislature that is giving free money to corporations like Boeing. And the only way to fight this is through actually action by community members, by students, by public school teachers, like it was demonstrated by the courageous West Virginia teachers. And we cannot rely on school boards or the school administration and Directors Association, which actually has let us down.
Yeah, so I think the, I think the Seattle School District has its work cut out for it, for sure. There's, there's a lot to be done. And especially, I think it's worth noting, the Seattle School District is more segregated than it's been in literally decades. And that creates an opportunity gap where schools in poor neighborhoods disproportionately of color kids are not getting prepared for a lifetime of success. They're being set up for failure. I think where the city's role really plays is making sure that kids get to school ready to learn and have the, I mean, it's tragic that in a city this wealthy, we have to worry about kids having food security and housing security so that they can go to school and learn without worrying about where their next meal's coming from. They also need basic material goods so that they have, you know, shoes and clothes and pens and so on. So the city should really be stepping up to make sure that all of our, all of our working poor and our homeless have adequate, have their needs met for their kids so that their kids can build a better life for themselves.
A big no on funding charter schools with those money. We need to strengthen our public schools and not take more money away from them. As far as the public schools are concerned, there's a couple of things I want to talk about. First of all, bus transportation may not seem like a big deal to you, but for kids that are traveling from across town and have a hard time getting to school on time, it has a big impact on their, on their performance at school. So we need to work, the city council should work with the school district in order to create those corridors and provide every opportunity for kids to get to school on time. The other piece is on making sure that we redraw those maps for the Seattle School District so that we have both rich and poor and everyone else in between for students that are in those schools. Take Lowell, for example, Lowell Elementary over here, it's primarily poor and a lot of homeless folks. Those, those teachers don't have the time to join the PTA. There's no one with big resources and big connections to be able to strengthen that school. So I think we need to have mixed-income schools in order to make education better for our kids.
Thank you, everyone. So we have time for about two more audience questions before we move into the lightning round. So this next question is a minute. It is, what does the council need to do to meet our climate goals? And we'll start with Zachary.
Just the other day, actually, I saw an article titled, "The Koala Is Going Functionally Extinct." This feels like a small anecdote, but this is a scary time in our lives when something like the koala is going functionally extinct. What we need to do is we need to be way more bold in the Seattle Climate Action Plan that came out. And I will say that LA has done a really, really great job of being really bold in their climate goals. So we need to make sure first that we, we look at what they're doing. They've done some really great things. I think part of it is making sure that we look at all of our new city-owned buildings and make sure that renovations are all electric. Want to look at recycling 100% of our waste water. We need to commit to the same goals as the state. Now, in 2050, the world needs to have zero emissions, which means the city should be there in about 2040, which means we need to get on our, we need to get on it right now and work on those goals. The other things that they're doing in LA that I think are really exciting, they're talking about food waste, they're capping climate change and pollution from big buildings, they're creating more green jobs, they're going to a zero-carbon electricity grid, and they're also creating jobs in the process that are all for folks in our communities. And this would be a really great economic impact. But we really need to be more bold in our climate crisis.
Well, I could talk for hours about this. But quickly, we need to do more to bring green technology to Seattle, create green technology jobs for our young people, and be innovative in changing the, what's happening to the environment. We have to look at the carbon cost of everything we do, not just cars and emissions, but construction. It takes 100 years to recoup the CO2 cost of a single-family home. It takes 1,000 years if you have steel and concrete involved. We need to look at innovative things like virtual track instead of fixed rail because then that's steel and concrete versus something that's painted on an existing road. And we need to build out our solar grid. I also have ideas on products that we buy that we're shipping, things with water across the country to come here, like Windex, and that could be changed. We can, we can save money and the manufacturer could save money, too.
National progressive leaders like AOC have been calling for a Green New Deal. Well, we need a Green New Deal for working people right here in Seattle. Seattle needs to be a real leader in environmental justice by becoming 100% renewable by 2030. We need to tax big business and the rich to massively expand public transit so that working people are able to leave their cars at home or not own cars at all and actually depend on public transit to get through their day. Make public transit free at point-of-use and make it fully electric. We need to rapidly shift away from fossil fuels to carry out a green public works program by funding a major expansion of solar and wind by Seattle Public Utilities, especially City Light. We need retrofitting of all homes for energy efficiency. And all of this would create massive numbers of public sector unionized living wage jobs. But to win any of this, we will need mass fighting movements. We have seen how fossil fuel corporations and billionaires will fight tooth and nail against any change, even minor. So if you want major shifts, then we're going to have to fight for it.
So there's exactly one environmental catastrophe that we absolutely must address, and that is climate change, and that is carbon pollution that we emit in the city. Zach, we have 20 years or so to do that. The good news is Seattle is the most carbon-friendly place to live in the entire region. The further away you live from Seattle, the more carbon-intensive lifestyle is forced to be. That's why housing is always the number-one way to prevent carbon pollution. Allowing people to live in the city reduces our carbon pollution. If they get squeezed out into the suburbs, they have to drive everywhere, they have longer trips. It costs, it's more pollution inherently. So housing is always number one. Number two is transportation. That's where 60% of the remaining carbon pollution in our city comes from. It's an unsolved problem to date. We have to be giving people choices other than automotive transport to go about their lives. And that's why one of my goals is to have a 100% walkable city. And what that means is I think 100% of homes in the city need to have food, groceries, childcare, and have a third place like a cafe or restaurant within walking distance of their home so they can choose not to use a car.
There's still a few percentage left of fuel, of power that we get from coal over in Montana. And I think first and foremost, we must remove that from our power infrastructure. Let's get the basics right. As far as the other big impacts, transportation, we need an all-electric public transportation system. And I think, side by side with that, our micro-mobility solutions, like electric bikes, like electric scooters. I know that the current mayor has sort of been dragging her feet on electric scooters. It looks like there's going to be a pilot program up and running, and that's going to be great. The more that we can electrify the transportation that we all use every day, it has the added benefit of helping with those first and last miles of people's commutes. So I think if we get those rights and also focus on green remodeling, there's major impact through development and through building. And if we could have green solutions that we can incentivize for homeowners and property developers, that's a win for us.
I agree with the candidates here, and they come in in many ways. But I think that, and I know Seattle's going to move towards green energy. I know that. But the problem is, even if green energy exists, if it's inaccessible to low-income families, there's no point. It's not as effective as we should be. So when we're talking about public transportation, we're also concerned that near the links, people who are poor are being pushed out further, while people who are higher income can enjoy the link. We need to make sure that we address that. We need to make sure that in city council, we give the voice to the communities who are often left out of these discussions. Because in a lot of ways, when I was growing up, being environmental, even though we were already recycling, even though we were already building, excuse me, growing our own vegetables in the back because of financial reasons, environmentalism seemed like a thing for the rich. We need to stop that. We need to ask communities of color. We need to ask low-income communities, how can we make this more accessible to you? And that, I believe, is the way that Seattle is going to become the future that we want to be. Thank you.
Before our lightning round, we have time for one more 30-second question. So Derek, if you want to put 30 seconds on the clock. I think this is an appropriate one to end on. So the question is, we live in a district. District is underlined. How do you see your role, your is also underlined, serving District Three? And I think we're going to start with Pat, 30 seconds.
My role is to respond to you. I get my marching orders from you. I will be in the community meeting with you. I am not going to make you come downtown to see me. I will be around the district in different locations with a schedule where you will know where I am. And also... And also, I will let you know who's visiting me so that you know I'm working for you and not some big company.
Throughout our five years in City Hall through election and reelection, we've shown that through having a working people's elected representative and by strengthening the confidence of ordinary people, we can win victories whether it is district-wide or city-wide or region-wide. In this central district, we have seen a racist redlining go to an economic redlining. And that's why we are fighting for affordable housing. We're fighting to build a post, bring back the post offices in the central district. We have $100,000 for the LGBTQ Health Center in Nova. And I'll tell you one last thing. Howard Charles lives in District Three. I do not represent billionaires like him.
I represent everyone in District Three. I want to be clear about that. I, here's my promise to you. One is, I'm always going to be clear about and communicative about what's coming up so that you will always have an opportunity to participate in the decision-making process. You can contact me and give real input before decisions are made so that your voice is heard. The other promise is I will always be available to discuss the retrospective side. What was the ultimate outcome and did it work? Some things won't work, some things will work great, some things will have unintended side effects. I'll be available for that discussion. I will be in the district for that so that you don't have to come to City Hall.
I will be out in all of your communities, talking to you, listening to you, and making sure that your voice is represented at city council. I will have office hours out in cafes and restaurants in your communities and let you know that I'm there. At city council, my door will always be open. You won't find me traveling around the country, giving speeches and fundraising for anyone else. I will be all yours and I will represent your voice at city council. Thank you.
We're spending millions of dollars and giving up our hard-earned money through taxes to help people who come from my background. I've lived it. And looking at the other eight city council seats, excuse me, six other city council seats that are open and also the non-opened one, I will provide the experience that we need to make sure that the policies we're creating are going to work on the ground because that's not only my personal background as a child growing up from refugee parents, but also as a public vendor and a tenants' rights attorney. Thank you.
A lot of folks in the last election talked about prioritizing having office or office hours in their district. I really was grateful for the actual person that followed through, Councilwoman Deborah Waras, who has office hours every Friday. And there's money in the budget to provide space for that. So not just at a coffee shop, but an actual office in community and staff for that. So that's something I'm really excited about. As far as accessibility, I can tell you right now, I get text messages from parents all the time and I'll continue to be accessible to you.
Great, thanks, everyone. So we are moving into our lightning round. So, okay, alright. So we are moving into our lightning round. So I would love if you could answer these questions in five words or less. Some of them can also be yes or no. That's totally fine as well. I would also ask that everyone just stay seated. It's just going to get a little chaotic if we're popping up every, yeah, every 20 seconds. So feel free to stay seated. That's no problem at all. We're going to start with Shama at the end. So five words or less. Who does the city need to do a better job listening to?
The city needs to do a better job listening to the marginalized and the vulnerable, people of color, low-income people, working-class people.
And five words or less, yeah. Because we don't have a timekeeper, so we got to stick to that.
Residents of their districts.
To those who are suffering the most.
People of color and immigrants.
Students and seniors.
Residents, not developers.
So coming back up here with Logan, this next question is on housing. Do you support allowing more housing types in single-family neighborhoods in District Three?
Yes.
It's central to my campaign.
Duplexes and driplexes, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, and we need public housing.
Alright, the next three questions are on transit. You'll be starting us. What is your favorite bus route in District Three?
The, it's the two because I can get downtown on a day off and go watch a movie.
Five words or less. It's the two.
Two, movie.
Three and four?
The three and a streetcar.
Fourteen.
The number 27.
So this, oh...
All Day 43, rest in peace.
So the next question, starting with Amy. Do you support allowing electric rental scooters in the city?
Only if helmets are required.
Yes.
They should be your scooters.
Yes.
Most definitely.
Yes, as soon as possible.
Starting with Zachary. You can only pick two. Street parking, bus lanes, or bike lanes?
Bus parking and bike lanes.
Oh, only two? Yeah, so let's repeat it. So yeah, you can only pick two. One is street parking, one is bus lanes, one is bike lanes. You can pick two.
Bus lanes and bike lanes. I think you said bus parking.
Sure.
Bus and bike.
Bus lanes and bike lanes.
Were you using roads for car storage?
Bus and bikes.
Bus and bikes.
The next is on the opioid crisis. And we're starting with Pat, I believe. Do you support the placement of safe consumption site, or a safe consumption site in District Three?
No, look at the Vancouver Coroner's report.
Yes, and in fact, my office fought for and won a million dollars to cite it in District Three.
Five words, everyone.
Potentially a pilot, yes.
Yes, as long as there's a path to recovery.
Undecided. I need to do more research.
Yes, but we have a lot of work to do.
The next three questions are on voting. I think starting with Shama at the end. What does it show about this election cycle that the PAC for Seattle Chamber of Commerce has already raised over $700,000? Five words or less.
It's a fight between chamber and working people. Pick a side.
Democracy vouchers means it doesn't matter.
Small businesses rule.
Not going to me.
They're scared when people organize.
Not going to me either. People before big business.
This next question, so the next two are around voting. And I think we're starting with Logan up here. Do you support allowing non-citizens to vote in municipal and county elections?
I don't think so, but I'm undecided.
Yep, so I'm going to repeat the question. So do you support, in five words or less, allowing non-citizens to vote in municipal and county elections?
I sort of like it.
Yes, definitely.
Absolutely.
If they've lived here a certain length of time.
Absolutely. My office has been looking into it.
And the last one, oh, I think, actually, I think we have two more. Let me check and see we're up with time. Okay, I think we're good. So starting with Egan, I believe. Do you support allowing 16- to 17-year-olds to vote in municipal and county elections?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
And then we have two lightning rounds from the audience. Five words or less. So five words or less, or yes, no, starting with Amy. How would you describe your attendance record with past committees and/or on boards you've served on, five words or less?
Great.
Followed through with my commitment.
Excellent.
Fighting for working people 24/7.
Yeah, of course. How would you describe your attendance record with past committees and/or on boards you've served on?
I follow through.
I don't make a promise I can't keep.
And yeah, and feel free to ask me to repeat them. I know that this gets a little more chaotic. You know, it's a lot more questions to kind of keep in mind. So I think this one is with Zachary. So this is the last one before we're getting into candidate closing statements, which you'll each have a minute. So five words or less. Please name some of the Indigenous leaders who support your campaign.
Colleen Echoock, Claudia Kaufman, Chris Sterns, John McCoy.
Five words or less.
I'm sorry.
Activist Linda Soriano.
Matt Remley, Millie Kennedy, Raymond King Fisher.
I'm endorsed by Labor's 242.
And I'm talking to lots of folks.
No one yet.
So that is it for our audience questions and our prepared questions. So we are going to move into the candidate closing statements. Derek, if you want to put a minute on the time. And then thank you all for keeping me up to date with who is starting first. It gets a little, like, we're really going around the circle here. I think it's Pat? Is that where we're at? So, sorry, 60 seconds. If we could hear your candidate closing statements.
Well, I need to give you more information about safe injection sites. This chart, it's just going through the ceiling, the deaths from illicit drugs in Vancouver, B.C. The solution isn't safe injection sites. The solution is treatment. There is nothing compassionate or progressive about having people live in conditions intense in RVs that if I had my dogs living like that, I'd be arrested for animal cruelty. We have got to open treatment centers yesterday and help these folks. I will be here for you. I will listen to you. I think many minds make a better decision than a single person does. I don't consider being elected, winning a popularity contest. We have to all find the right solutions because we all have creative input that can be used. I believe that we can do better together.
Around the country, millions of working people, including rank-and-file Democrats, are recognizing that we're not going to win change by putting our faith in business as usual, politicians who say that they will listen to all sides or that they will represent everyone. We need elected representatives who will unapologetically fight for the needs of working people and the marginalized and help build mass movements against the billionaires, whether Jeff Bezos or Donald Trump. This year, the Chamber of Commerce is fighting hard to take back City Hall. Already, they have a war chest of nearly three-quarters of a million. Their goal in District Three, anybody but Shama Sawant. Why? Because they know that my office is unshakably accountable to working people and precisely because together we have won historic victories for workers and renters and marginalized communities. The chamber knows that my council seat belongs to the working people of Seattle. The best defense is a good offense. Join me in fighting for rent control and social housing and making Seattle ICE-free. Join me in continuing to make our movements in Seattle an inspiring example for working people everywhere.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out today. Thank you for having me and that. Thank you for moderating. We've touched on a lot of issues tonight, or this afternoon. To solve them, we need a council that listens to the community, that works together, and that delivers results. The status quo is simply not acceptable right now. We've gone from having high housing prices to a housing crisis. We've gone from housing instability to a homelessness crisis. This is a failure of leadership. I bring something different. I want to make our city stronger. I'm not a political opportunist. I'm not a partisan ideologue. I'm here to solve the problems. I'm a lifetime resident and a small-business owner, and I bring a career of finding these solutions. I get things done. Seattle has a $6 billion budget and over 10,000 employees. We need a leader that can drive results in a large organization and elevate the voices of those who have been ignored. With your vote, we can achieve progressive solutions, real solutions to our city's problems. And I look forward to getting it done together with you. Thank you.
The reason I decided to run in this council race is because I've been frustrated by the leadership that we've been getting these last few years. While Councilmember Sawant has been traveling around the country raising money for the Socialist Alternative, I've been building community, cleaning the streets of our district, and advocating for small business. While Councilmember Sawant has been focused on raising her national profile, she's neglected the people of District Three. I meet with small businesses, nonprofits, and residents in our district, and I'll find out what's working, what's not, and what we can do better. We need sound policy, not sound bites. We need a council member who will seek out constituents, not a camera and a podium. We need someone who will stand with the voters of District Three, not grandstand and then fail to do anything meaningful on policy. As the producer of Pride, of course, I want things to be all drag queens, rainbows, and unicorns. But we have real problems. And they've gotten worse under this council and this council member. Words are not enough. We need action. I'm asking for your support, and thank you.
We need a city council member who has real experience, not only personal experience of what it's like to grow up in a marginalized community, but also experience on the ground. A person who has gone to King County Jail, who has spoken to people who are homeless, fighting addiction and also mental illness in King County Jail. We need to have a person, a council member, who will be able to make sure that the policies we create will work on the ground. And that's why I'm running for city council. And that's why it's important that we have somebody with my perspective and experience in the city council. And not only during my work as a tenants' rights attorney, I fought against corporations who were trying to illegally evict monolingual and immigrant communities. And I won those battles. And I'm going to bring that strength and that battle to the city council. Because in my work and line work of a public defender, I don't just clock out at 5:00. My work is continuous in the evenings because that's when my clients, my constituents, are available. And so that's why I'm hoping that you'll consider voting for me for city council. Thank you.
I just want to elevate the fact that you have six people up here that are really excited and passionate to serve you. So thank you all for being here and just thanks for 43 for having us. You absolutely deserve a council member who will work with people no matter their differences on these issues because these issues matter too much, because our neighbors matter too much, you matter too much. Let me finish with a story. This past weekend, a couple of weekends ago, I was visiting my grandmother in Montana. And we were saying goodbye to her. We were in a sweat on Saturday. We spent the time praying for her. And I actually received my creed name with my mother. My creed name is Be Sin Ganegamot. It means young buffalo leader. And I tell you this because I absolutely intend to live up to that name. Working with people, centering people in the solutions, listening and driving towards solutions because we have no more time to wait. I hope you'll support me in the campaign.
And so that concludes our forum here today. So before we let you all go, just a couple reminders, announcements, and thank you. So the first one is, if you liked the event that you saw here today and you want to see more just like it in your district, please consider donating. And thank you for all of those who have donated thus far. I believe we have a spot in the lobby. Is that right, Scott? Alright, so you can go to the lobby. We have a table staffed with really great 43rd District volunteers. We also are always looking for members of the 43rd District Democrats. So you can find more information about that as well or talk to myself, our Chair Scott, any of the other 43rd District Democrat board members here today. We have two upcoming events. The first is next Tuesday, right here in this space. It is our ballots and bubbly event.